We all said ladies. You folks ready? Okay, folks, please do I mean the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. When they should have their god invisible, they could teach us how long.
Okay. Happy Earth Day, everyone. This is the April twenty second, the Town of Canada legal planning board. I think everybody knows everybody. That's the dius Shannon, right? You want us, want me to introduce the folks or can you tell by the tags? That's a good plus if you have an application. I, I will note that Dan is active this evening, Tim is on. A trip, so he's filling in as an active member. Thanks, Dan, for doing that. And again, since most people have been through the drill here, I won't go through our procedures. Other than Shannon, when we get to your part of the agenda. If you just come to the podium and tell us a little about the project and what's going on out there and we'll have some questions for you. Hopefully, we can take care of adjudicating your application this evening. We have one. Public hearing, which is Shannon's property. And that was duly advertised in the Daily Messenger on April fifteenth. So let the record show that. First item on the agenda that involves public participation is privilege of the floor. Anyone here or on Zoom land want to address the board regarding it? Something that is not on the agenda for this evening? Now's the time to speak. If not, we're gonna move ahead to the agenda. All right, first application this evening is CPN twenty twenty four, one thirty nine. Mark's engineering. For the Shide property over on Middle Cheshire Road. Yet to be assigned to address. This is a continued site plan from a couple of months back, the applicant had asked that we postpone. Our deliberations until this evening, so. We are here, you are here, Logan, so why don't you tell us what's happening out of Little Cheshire?
Yeah, like you mentioned, we had this application. In a couple of months ago, but my client decided to reduce the footprint of the house. Less changing the site plan, so we're just waiting for architecials to do that. What we're proposing is a single family residence with a walkout basement and a barn. Driveways positioned in a location that has adequate site distance. It is over the twenty thousand square foot disturbance, so we have submitted a SWIP. And implemented stormwater mitigation practices with filter strips both from the house. And the barn from the downstouts. We have posed the non-site wastewater treatment facility. And we are hooking up to the water that runs along Middle Cheshire Road. That's about it. Any questions that you guys have?
Sure, we have several, I'm sure. Board, any questions that you have? I have a couple of.
Oh, Logan, I just had a couple. Just confirm the height of your buildings are gonna be less than zoning allows.
Uh, yeah, I have a. Elevation. Top of peak is sixteen feet.
Okay. And the barn also is.
Yeah, yep.
Your driveway showing thirteen, our normal is twelve, you want thirteen, you have thirteen.
I see details that say it's thirteen.
We were just talking about that.
So I put thirteen, I think that is the width of the stone. The driveway itself is can be paved to twelve feet, but you wanna have the stone, the back of stone a little bit wider for an apron.
You're gonna have a gravel driveway that we're apparently, I think, is what it said.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Just wanna bring that.
I, I've seen it thirteen, so I, I tend to keep it that way, just so there's no confusion with the town's details.
And do you have a detail of how the, that your filter strips are gonna be?
I. Don't know. I don't have one, but I can provide one and resubmit it first.
My only question on it was the south side. Cause that side gets pretty steep right there.
Yep.
How that's gonna retain before it gets across.
The way I graded it, we are pushing out quite a bit, so there is a flat spot, so right at the end of the flat area is can, that's where the filter strip is going to be before it. Goes back down into the steeper grade, so it will be flat, so we'll be able to spread out and. Have better chances of infiltration.
If you can give me a detail on it.
Sure.
I know the ECB brought up questions about making sure that nothing gets set upon. I think to, to the other, to the right side. East side property, but I, I looked, I looked at the property and there's a big swale there, so nothing's gonna get into that pond.
Yep.
Um, and it seems like, I think there's already. Something, a swell or something that goes underneath that driveway to the south. I believe already.
I believe you're correct.
And so that would be good there.
Can I add that?
Yeah, go ahead.
To add to ECB and AG committee back in January. Both had kind of requested or requested clarification on. If the property is currently farmed or was recently or just like a historical context of that.
Years ago, but I, I don't think it's being farmed. Right now. Uh, my last site visit last year, it wasn't being farmed, it was overgrown.
So like.
I'm sure it has.
Been a couple of years since.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. And I think with that. The AG committee said, I'm just reading their notes. Uh, the land is not now in active agriculture, it's been recently farmed, so it constitute a loss of farmable land. I mean, I think that that aligns, but it's not actively farmed currently or within the past. Two years, I'd say roughly, just further back.
Look in the driveway, the, the property along the roof front is sort of a hump to it. Uh, is the driveway more or less up on that hump?
Yes, yeah.
So then it climbs coming off the middle Cheshire. Does it then start falling back down before you get to the barn?
The way the site works, I mean, I don't know if you can see the topography and all of it. It's, it's kind of plateaued. And the way we graded it, we have the driveways, it kind of comes up and wraps around the side of the hill.
Okay, so the house is sitting up on the.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't, it's not the other side going back down the other side.
No.
Trying to tell for the setback was from the roof. You, between your previous plan and this plan, changed the stormwater management system, didn't you? Changed that bed?
We changed the location of it.
Okay.
Uh, because the grading is less because of smaller footprint, so we, we moved it closer to the house.
Okay. And you, you show limits to disturbance and you'll certainly live within those. You said the plan changes were a result of a change in the design of the home?
Yes.
From the original plant? The shed in the back is stained, understand? There's a.
Yeah, the shed in the back by the property line there.
Did the plan reflect a maintenance procedure for the stormwater management facility? As to how to be maintained by the homeowner?
I mean, more or less, it's just you don't mow it. It's vegetation.
Okay, so there's no cleaning out or?
No, I mean, it's a pop-up emitter that. When it's during a rain event pops up and then the water disperses evenly. Uh, and the vegetation takes up the stormwater. And the. The impervious service that we've created reflects the amount of storage that were. That the filter strip is, contains.
Okay, so there's no maintenance of the filter strip?
No. It's more or less just keeping, maintaining the vegetation.
Okay. That sound logical? I know we've been trying to put maintenance schedules and maintenance notes on plans for rain gardens and so make sure. So we talked about the ECB, they also concerned about if and how much farming was done. Certainly, use of native plantings, any, any landscaping that's on the property. Uh, the AG committee did spend a lot of time talking about whether the property is farmed or not, if it's not farmed, it's not a loss of farmland. If it's being farmed, then it would be lost farmland, so I think you stated for the record that it is not being farmed.
It's not.
Jim Fletcher had a comment about the emitter pit that with the one inch service.
I believe we changed that.
Okay. If not, I think.
Have to take a look at that.
I think we have a.
I thought we addressed.
I think we have a condition, making sure that Jim's. Desires are met. How you making out with Tyler as far as the set system?
I believe that was submitted to Tyler, I'm not sure if it was, we haven't finished through him.
Okay, and we've got the conditions regarding the approval of the system for the CFO. Co department, there was a note sixteen about floodplain. Yeah, couldn't believe that, yeah, that's way up on the hill. You wanna pan over to note sixteen, do you see note sixteen, wanna read that for us?
I think, I think what it was is the, what the map that they referenced. It was the wrong, yeah, it was the wrong map.
Oh.
Wrong map number, and I updated this to be reflect the actual map number.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So if our company did not have any response. Your plan shows two different lot areas. One seven point six two five on one page and on another page it shows six point three eight. Is that reflective of? Right away or something?
Uh, I think it measures, one measures to the, the road line and the other measures to the center line.
Okay.
It must, it's probably on the existing conditions plan.
That's.
See that?
Yep.
The surveyors tend to do that, have two different.
Center line, part, title line is the center.
Yeah.
Could you just note that the reason for the differences?
Sure.
Where the measure to?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and if common drives north and south, they have, they have no relation to your property, I guess once the Dawson property. To the north, that goes back. A right away, there's a right away marked on the plan. It.
It doesn't affect our property.
Okay, so.
But it's, it's part of the family.
Okay, cause this was a lot as part of that something.
Right, yeah, I think it's her father or brother who owns that parcel.
Okay, uh, that covers it for me. Uh, anyone in the audience wanna address the board regarding this application? Or do you feel further discussion is needed? If not. It's a type two seeker. And someone wants to take seeker and site plan together. Let's do it.
Sure, I make a motion to accept the seeker resolution type two action. And also the site plan. At CPR four, CPN twenty four dash one thirty nine. At no address, Middle Cheshire Road. For approval and how many now conditions are there?
Yeah, two conditions, mission nine, it'll be dealt with ventilated filter ship be provided, mission ten. Uh, the, the lot area designation be revised and consistent, you know, we had clarified.
Was it ten conditions? With the ten conditions.
Okay, motion or second?
A second.
In motion second, one thing I noticed there, between the two resolutions. The correct revised plan is four one. And your single stage has one seven. Okay, with that correction and those conditions, all in favor?
Fine.
Posted, motion carries.
Thanks, Logan.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Here's a familiar application, CPN twenty twenty four, one forty three. Marathon Engineering Parkside Drive, actually known as Town Landing. Uh, it's continuation of a hearing regarding preliminary overall subdivision and site plan. And. Now you're gonna, like Mark said, you're gonna get a bunk in the. Own the room somewhere.
That puts some miles on the car. Uh, good evening, Marathon Engineering, Matt Tomlinson, joined by Andrew Nero, Jeff Cook. And not sure if we have anybody joining us online, but they may pop on or off. Uh, wanted to just give the board an update, I think Chuck's probably been copying on some emails with some different agencies that we've been working through from comments, but since the last time. That we were here for preliminary, last night, the town board acted on the modification to the IZ. Language to give some flexibility to the planning board staff and the developer as it relates to. Interpretations of the various lot sizes or bulk requirements, as long as it's consistent with the overall plan that the board has reviewed, et cetera. We've also been diligently working with town staff and all of the review agencies, including Farmington Water. Uh, State Health Department, uh, town staff. DEC for the sanitary sewer approvals, et cetera, to try to get everybody to the finals, hey, we're good for sign offs on this. And we've made great progress on that, we're in the meeting yesterday with several members of both MRB. Farmington Water to resolve some of the outstanding items as it related to their comments, and I believe an email. From Dan Del Prio was forwarded to the town. Uh, with two or three. Uh, conditions that they were asking to be put on, but that we've agreed to accommodate, we just haven't updated the plan to accommodate those yet and plan to do so prior to the chairman. Signing the preliminary, preliminary overall plans. Uh, our goal, and I think we've stated it all along, is to be in the ground as soon as possible. Uh, contractors are telling us that if they start by Memorial Day, they can have the road in no later than end of October. Which allows us to turn lots over to the home builder, the model to be built and really, uh, this project to be set up for success moving forward as far as the housing starts and everything else. So that's, that's what we're pushing for and we understand, uh, we've been booked with this board many times, uh, to try to work through. Uh, any of those items that the board has seen and hopefully we have resolved, uh, those comments to your satisfaction. Knowing that we need to have preliminary overall approval in place. Uh, prior to final section one, which we've already submitted. Um, that's our goal for tonight, and I mentioned last time we were here, uh, if there was, uh. An opportunity or benefit to talk through any final section one comments that the board had. At tonight's meeting in the anticipation of moving forward in future agendas coming up in the next couple of weeks slash months. Uh, to get the final. Approval teed up and ready to go, we would love to do so, uh, we do anticipate, and I believe there's been some. Offline discussions with Mr. Nadler and the MRB folks as to our opportunity to also talk to this for the enforcement officer. About pursuing a grading permit in advance, assuming that we can get the. Uh, SWIP and letter credit in place, which we're working through with MRB as we speak. To break ground from an earthwork standpoint while we're. Uh, dotting i's and crossing t's with all the utility agencies, cause they wanna see certain things from the town as it relates. To that preliminary overall plan before they get too far down the road as far as signing the plans. So that, that's the update for the board, uh, the preliminary overall plans that has been uploaded, I think it was, uh, four fourteen, maybe last Monday. With the latest, we also sent hard copies down of the full size and a reduced set of the final section one. Uh, to help facilitate as well as uploaded that electronically, uh, I believe on the same date. All comments that have been addressed in the preliminary overall plans that have also correspondingly been updated in that final section one. With the additional detail, obviously, that the, that the board requires and that we had requested to be waived until final, like building lighting, some of those other things. Uh, the plans I see is four one. Four one? For final section one?
Now, let's, let's talk just preliminary over.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, last one's, I saw it, March eighteen.
Phase one, the last one's up to April fifteen, one, but for freedom overall.
Okay. Yeah, let's.
I'm sorry, you said April? Correct, right, and I think Chuck said March though, so that's why.
I said.
You're talking about the original date of the plans for the freedom of.
Right, well, your resolution is March seventeenth.
Correct. Which were uploaded to, uh, I need to first.
Okay. I, I thought that there was a preliminary overall set uploaded on four eighteen, which. Again, it's just addressing MRB comments, water comments.
Confuse things, but I think that was section. I don't even see that.
Yeah, it's near section one.
Okay. I don't wanna confuse things because changes since that day have been extremely minimal, addressing comments, which is reflected, I think, by the way we've received, so. That's the last they have on that, of course, any updates will be. Uh, subject to your signature.
Well, the reason. Yeah, I wanna make sure we tie it down as. Could be sensitive to any, if, should any changes be required, amendments of. The overall, uh, wanna make sure we're looking at the right overall. That was adopted here or considered here to safety.
Yes, correct.
So, um. Again, we're just talking preliminary overall. And we've been waiting through for the last couple of months. I think we chewed it up. Quite a few times, uh, we went and got all kinds of referrals and we got responses on the referrals. The applicant's been very diligent as far as responding to our request for additional information. Uh, we've looked at structures, we've looked at balconies, we've looked. You know, air conditioning systems, so really got into the skin of this thing, and we still have the final section. By section review to do as they come in, so. But as far as the preliminary overall, are we ready to act the seat?
Me personally, as long as you take care of a few things.
Okay.
Oh, and I don't wanna see it not, I've asked for it, but it's not there, the clearing distance. I've asked for that to be actually on the plans.
Yep.
And it's not there, just the line, squiggly line on a blue line is not gonna.
Yep.
Guarantee us a. Firm. Uh, just in the passing, how things get taken and they just go right to line, so.
Yes, and I believe that we talked about that, that's gonna be twenty feet from the line minimum.
Minimum on the north side and I think it's up to fifty or something, whatever that is.
Yes.
Yep, and, um.
If there wants to be a condition that's added with no, no issue, that will make sure that gets shown graphically on the plan of the convention.
I don't know if this is part of preliminary or on their. Phasing plan, but the, we're only gonna demo by phase. We're not gonna demo the whole build, the whole property.
That's correct, with the exception that some of the stormwater comments related to. A semi-permanent staging area for contractors, that kind of thing, so there will be areas outside the specific. Buildings, but they'll be quantified in the, the SWIP from the sequencing.
Not stripping the land, we're just doing what we need to do for each phase. Somehow it needs to be stated, cause on your demo plan, it just says to demo. Then really bow out a phased plan to demo only in certain places.
Final phase one plan, we're working with contractors now to hammer out some of these details on how they're gonna build this, we've also asked for the five acre waiver, which requires a specific sequencing, so the final section one plans as we. Nail down that with the final SWIP comments, we'll have that specific for section one, where that section one clearing limit is as well.
Oh, perfect, good. I just looked at the plans, the last one I saw, and I just saw it again, the ones I guess paper. Will you make a mailbox detail? For what you're gonna build or a mailbox or whoever's gonna build, cause I've been to these developments and they're either the same, like Fox Ridge. Some of them are the same, some of them aren't the same. There's no detail in your, on how to, how you're gonna build.
And can you just remind me if you mean the single family?
Single family homes.
Okay, those are intended to be individual.
Right.
Mailboxes.
Yes.
Uh, and that'll be up to the home builder as far as provided.
I personally, my personal opinion would like to see it, how it's gonna look, the same. As a home builder may just have, you know, like. I've seen it different, Fox Ridge, for example. Uh, they're different, on some parts of it, they're exactly the same, they look really nice, and then some of the other parts, they're all half hazmat, now I imagine some of them broke and they replaced them.
Okay, uh, I know we added the typical townhome mailbox, I don't think we added the single family, so we can definitely incorporate that in a final section.
Is your plan to have a standardized mailbox for a single family home, so?
I think we've asked the home.
Yeah, we haven't discussed that with.
We'll get that answer for you.
Okay, I mean, if you like. Some developers prefer that, the consistency, others, leaving it up to the owner, the buyer, and they go out to pace hardware and buy a box.
Yeah.
Slick it out the curb.
All the curves.
Yep.
I'll find out that answer.
So I think in note on the plan, just saying either there'll be standardized mailboxes. Or they will be, the mailboxes for the single homes will be at the discretion of the.
So there, there has been a desire or a comment to make them all the same, it's just we wanna know which it is or.
Yeah, okay. And if possible, my last request to you. Is move the match line.
Where you go?
On the. On the sheet, I can't remember what sheet they are, but. Uh, the match line is for between property or lots eight and nine. It match line goes right through that, that pathway. It just, it just disappears every now and then, you know what I mean? Just if you could just.
And that was on the final section one plans that you are reviewing?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
I believe that's still the case on the preliminary plans, the final section one, I believe we shifted, but.
Okay.
If not, prior to, if the next meeting, we need to address the preliminary comments and upload a new one, I'll make sure that that's on it.
You've already addressed all the street names. I don't know if you got my comments on the street names at all. Is there any chance that Sackett can remain Sackett all the way through instead of going through a four-way and then changing to another name street? Sackett turns into Excelsior at a four-way. Just seemed like that road would just be one road. As continuity, I don't know.
Oh, I see.
I think there'd probably be a question for the code enforcement to check with emergency services, I don't think we have a preference as it relates to how that crosses over Uptown Boulevard, but. If, if, there might be three second intersections on Uptown Boulevard, if that's the case, and that may, uh, cause some issues for them versus, uh. Versus, um, you know what I mean, the four-way as well as the first one.
Which loop do they go in?
And that, that might be easy to handle with, you know, houses one to three hundred here, two hundred up there. But I would defer to them, if they are okay with it, we can change it, if they would like a separate name, I suggest we would.
Finally. Um, my last question is, um. The street names, I think I saw one street name from our list. From our historian list, is that correct?
Uh, all names are from his list except for Uptown Waming Boulevard, the development of the spine road to be named that, but all other ones are from the list.
I didn't. Thank you for doing that. Um. Yes. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Mark, you had sent me some of the. Concerns from before the last meeting when you were away and.
Yeah, several of them were actually addressed. I think the one that still hasn't just referring to. And E C B talks about it too, is just the vegetation. And sheet two landscape point four. Um, one, I would ask that the E C B comments be included on the topic, because there's a number of discussions about. That, and there's a copy of those in the, uh. Uh, but in what I was hoping we could do is just refer to. The Tonic Kennedy go link that documents. The plants that are allowed. So there's one for that. If they need that, I can see they get it. There's an PDF for it. Uh, instead of. Take, take that link and plug it into sheet two landscape point. Then that'll give a full list of what is non-invasive. Uh, in the, maybe just to touch on the E C B notes, I can go through them. Hopefully, you're ready. Ground cover species being used in places of the make minor, which is an invasive species. And then we'll talk about the caution related to that. Uh, the addition of additional native species such as service berry and red thuds and smaller tree category. Help maintain some of the wildlife in the area and support the birds. The inclusion of the native species, if you include that link that I'm suggesting, then we can get that. That'll take care of that, and then the recommendation that no oak trees be pruned during the bloom season. To keep them healthy and. That can somehow be noted in plans. That would be a good deal with this. I think in. Looking at the other comments that I had.
If I could just touch on the U C B ones. So I I was at that meeting and I know the service berry and the other ones were kind of a hey, if you can, great, but. Um, you know, understand there's desire to avoid dropping along sidewalks and areas. So we did say that we would take a look at that. Um, and I know the native species was just a generic, they did encourage us the first time we were there to go outside of the list. That is just in the form-based code in the in Baglo, so we did try to incorporate some additional species to help with that, so. Um, but I did note the ground cover one, and I know that we need to update that.
Um, and looking at visibility from other areas, when you look at the visibility towards the parking from Uptown Boulevard. It's a little bit hard to tell what's ultimately planned for that, and that's one of the things that's form-based codes is that we're really trying to buffer. Uh, parking areas from a visibility standpoint. Can we look at a higher density in those areas when you're looking from uptown towards? The parking areas.
Towards the parking from uptown.
Uptown looking towards the parking area.
And that's specific to the apartment.
Uh. Yeah, it's gonna be a higher density.
And the mixed-use parking areas, okay. Yeah, we can look at that. I know specific to the mixed use on the south. Side of uptown, uh, we switched those uh to coniferous tree along the backs of lots one through five, so that the view corridor. At that intersection is really just down the drive aisle, which we can't do much from a.
Right.
Screening standpoint, because that drive aisle is within twenty feet of the end of the building, and then we've got the coniferous about twenty feet inside of that, so. I think we have screened that as well as we can. Uh, we could definitely take a look at the apartment parking, because we've got a larger kind of view angle into that area.
Yeah, the higher density is where I have the most concerns to try to keep it compliant with, um. The, the, the new shed, I guess we call it.
Yeah, and I I do think, you know, the layout with screening by the buildings to fire hall, we've been able to really reduce any type of parking visibility impacts.
Yeah, I think that, I think that, uh, by firehouse, it actually does, from what I can tell, it's a little hard. You know, the sheets, that's what I think that's actually. Um, what's the board's opinion on the a buffer towards Excelsior and Candlewood? And and these are like, and I guess in my opinion, they're they're like. Groupings, so it's a question of if we think we need them in between them or not. Um.
We're, we're against that more.
As we're looking from Excelsior and Candlewood, so that's down on the.
Yeah.
Do we need buffering before the, are we, are we looking at that saying we're already going from higher density to?
Single family.
Something different. We normally like to have buffering there. Thoughts on that? If I look at the form-based code, then we're supposed to have it there. But when I look at the type of structures that are there, I I can look at.
So you're looking at the area between the. What's out on fire hall and the single family homes on Excelsior?
You got it.
Mm-hmm.
Along fire hall, I'm sorry, so.
No, as you're looking from Candlewood and Excelsior, so down in that corner. That's not part of this, is the difference of the the two developments?
In in the southeast corner of the property. If you could go to, um, sheet C eight point three and eight point four, that might, uh. Answer the, answer the question or alleviate the concern. I think we've. Uh, spent quite a few dollars, uh, providing. That screening with some double roll in the gap between the lighting along that entire property line, you go down one more sheet. Uh, and then same all the way through anywhere that it backs the parking, so I think we have buffered that pretty well.
What are, what are those? What's, what is that planning of?
Uh. Good question. Sorry, I'm trying to make very small symbols here.
Yeah. See, but that's what we.
Uh, they're both, they're both evergreen species is what we have it denoted. Uh. We have a a white pine, swamp white oak and northern red oak mix.
Alright, thank you. Um. There's some existing trees are now. Yeah. On that area.
We are grading pretty close to the property line through that area, just to provide the space to the the new Uptown Lanning Boulevard.
What was that?
There's, excuse, there's trees on neighbors probably there. But we're clearing essentially the property.
What was the reason? I think this came up some time ago, um, the. Open, what I call open space connections. So in some cases, they convert into water. I think in the first ones that we looked at, they were, they were land areas. But there's not physical connections that actually takes housing into the. Open space conditions is tail. So we we don't leave any, the the homes back to the residential area back up to the open space, but there's no connection to them before neighborhood access. What we.
Uh, there's no connection. Through lot or in the side yards, if you will. There is connection to every open space to the right away in the sidewalk.
Okay, so there's that every one of them.
Correct. Yeah, none of them have named lots by lots.
Yes, and I would agree.
And then the one area that I am still struggling with on the route is not having complete streets. Just because of the density, I understand that it increases the volume that it's caused to the project. But we've been trying to make sure that we maintain that increase in higher density areas. I just think people are gonna want to be. Um, so. Is, is there some way that we can address that need for both additional bicycle and foot traffic that I think is gonna come out of this neighborhood?
I think that we have addressed it, and I I know we talked about it previously, but we can. Dive into that again, Uptown Lanning Boulevard, we consciously are spending a lot of money on a street that has no housing units off of it, other than the apartments. And neighborhood streets with the eleven-foot lanes, sidewalk on one side of all of them. Really provides that connecting link for lower-density pieces, meaning, you know, there's only. Forty to fifty lots off of, off of each leg before you have a direct link to that complete street that has bike lanes on both sides, sidewalks on both sides. Connections out to the right way. So coming off of those bike lanes, coming off of those sidewalks into a street that should be quieter, that neighborhood street, um. Again, it it really was an intentional decision to to focus that. A thorough, fair, complete street on a road that doesn't have driveways, cars backing out into it, that kind of thing, to really provide that. Circulation and access to the larger development. Um. So I I think we have addressed it. I know complete streets on the subdivisions, you know, you add another three feet of pavement on both sides, another sidewalk. For what I anticipate will be much lighter travel than Uptown Boulevard, where we have provided that. I think that the project does provide that.
It increases the surface too.
Significantly, yeah.
Yeah.
Does the board feel we have enough mobility in that area?
I think so, in the secondary streets, yeah.
I would agree.
I think we're trying to sort of balance. The environmental aspects and the runoff with the certainly the accessibility. I think on those secondary streets, uh. Having the sidewalk and what's the car way width, twenty feet, twenty?
I'm sorry.
The car way width on the secondary streets.
About twenty-two feet, eleven feet of pavement plus the doors, yeah.
Fair point.
Anything else?
Well, it's all I've got.
Yeah.
I I had a comment from Sarah. Um, that I'll share.
That's gonna be good with her.
That in the back of the N R I plan, there is a D B C, uh, list of plans and files, so she wanted to meet.
On the form-based code.
It's in the N R I.
Oh, it's in the N R I. It's in the form-based code that she was.
The form-based code does have a list, and again, E C B did ask us to expand past that a little bit.
Okay, so you're.
Which we have, yeah, yep.
Okay. Uh, let me go out to the public. I know, uh. This got some play on social media again, this application. Last couple of days, so I want to make sure the public has had a chance to talk to the board if they have any issues. I guess they would be out in Zoom land. Anyone wanna? Express their comments, concerns, questions regarding this application? If not. Uh. Sarah dropped off. She had to go her meet, okay. I'll make sure she was with everything, um. Okay. Can we, once and for all, decide we're gonna call these phases or sections, please?
Why do you have that? Three, you're sections because they're phases anyways, just when it's called out of code in.
But in sections are individual sections with filed plaques. Oftentimes, there are phases within the section. Meaning you file a two A, two B, similar to how we did here, for example, um, so that that please, uh.
Faces gives you impression it's going to be, uh. Chronological, it's gonna, yeah, one, two, and you may, you may jump from phase one, section one. To section four. You may, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, so such sections can be phased, but phases can't really be sectioned from a filing of a plaque standpoint, that's why we call it that.
Okay. So can we agree that they will be sections, and since we'll be looking at the section plans, uh, subsequently, uh, that's. So that should be reflected in any correspondence involved. Uh. There was some discussion when we did a preliminary review of the conditions about checking with, uh, Chris. Uh, was, was that ever?
Yes, we.
Just, I think, condition eleven, condition seventeen, condition.
Eleven, I don't remember.
Excuse me, that, that was not it.
Um, Eric and I just, we're gonna add, we're gonna change six.
Six. Okay.
First of all, you're adding the open spaces areas to six hundred or five oh four? I just don't remember.
Open space areas.
Six hundred is the mixed-use building.
That's the, that is the parcel that the.
The big guy.
Maintenance or deed restriction will be.
Got attached to, that's right. We're gonna add change condition number six to the preliminary overall phase subdivision plans are to be revised to. Nope, it's still gonna be a phased subdivision plan. That's going to be shown in sections. Um, revised to identify. Easements over the open space areas and easements and public trail easements, as well as indication. That the operate, that the open space trail, stormwater management facility shall be owned and maintained by the owner of lot six hundred. And that such obligation shall be enforceable by the Tonic Kennedy by through a deed restriction. And then we're going to add that prior, another condition that prior to signature and final plans, the applicant shall obtain approval from the town engineer and town attorney for proposed deed restrictions. Obligating the owner of lot number six hundred. To own, operate, and maintain all open space areas, trails, and stormwater management facilities.
And that's, uh, I don't know that we need to clarify, but we are building trails within the park, so I'm assuming that just means trails physically located on the parcels that we're talking.
Yes.
That is, yeah.
Yes, and that's.
Okay.
That's fine. Um, I think there were a couple of other modifications, and I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that they got in there. Uh, number twelve had something about. Preliminary being filed with the clerk's office, Ontario County Clerk, which wouldn't happen until final. I just wanted to make sure that that was revised.
Are you looking at all?
It is, yeah, we discussed last time, so I I don't have an updated, uh, draft resolution. I just want to make sure that.
What's it about?
I had said, once the preliminary overall subdivision plans are signed by the planning board chair, they're to be filed in the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
Did you say the county clerk? Yeah, that's what's now conditioned thirteen prior to seating a group of plans pending section. Preliminary overall phase subdivision plans have been signed and filed with town.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great, okay.
Uh, mine is science.
So, uh. Any of the conditions that, uh, that Mark and Bob brought up this evening, uh. Do we have those to be? Uh, added on about the showing the clearing line, the the demo line, the section demo lines. What's to be? Cleared and grubbed? And.
I did, basically from the conversation I had, that one's gonna be a condition, the limits of demolition. I thought that was gonna be addressed as part of final section one, based on the conversation, but.
We were talking.
We're gonna make the whole project. Add a condition that we dress as part of final section one, yes. Well, I, I think there's a question about, correct me if I'm wrong, the dimension to the north property line to the clearing limit, which we've agreed to be twenty feet. So if that wants to be a condition of overall, that clearing on the north property line be no closer than twenty feet to the north property line. That would be fine, and we'll make sure that's reflected on the plans.
And it's something Bob's brought up a couple of times. It definitely shouldn't be. It's on a rate? Yeah, I mean, we, we've seen what happens when they just go at it.
And then mailbox deep details for typical single family homes to be added to. The, uh, clarification we derive from the code was also regarding second drive continuing or remained as name came across Uptown Boulevard. And then, uh, the E C B comments to be noted on the plans. So we asked whether, and if there's any other ones that I missed.
Is that strong enough for you, Mark?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Sure, okay. Uh, and how are we to address the farm and water? They gave us specific items that we. I just want to have a general statement saying.
I talked to Dan earlier about that.
Okay.
And I read him the condition that we have currently drafted in here, and he was fine with that.
Okay.
I told, you know, basically Sarah was gonna rely on him anyways for those conditions that he wants on there, um. So he said it's fine with this.
Well.
Let me, and that was just talking about something else, address farming waters.
And you were.
That's fine.
And you were okay with those.
Correct, we wanted to have that meeting with an agreement on how that would be addressed, yes.
Yeah.
Um. Well, actually, we're gonna add another condition. Based on my conversation. I would recommend another, um. Condition based on my conversation with, uh, our town engineer and and, uh, people from the farming. A condition shall be added that, um, it's more for awareness, because we're gonna modify our water. It's more for awareness that we're gonna modify our water policy, but. Uh, something to the extent that you have to comply with the town of Farmington's water policies and design guidelines. There's a slightly different. The town of Canada was. But they're the operator of the water district, so. Yeah, pitch out the vibe of the. What the town of Farmington's water. Laws, rules, policies and regulations. Does the town of Canada own the water system?
Sure knows.
And Farmington maintains it.
Farmington.
Which means they want the number of valves they want. And we've seeded that. Authority to them. That's how we operate and that's the only way Farmington is going to operate. This line, that's the only way you're gonna get water is if you put. You design it to prime respects. Will own it, but. They operate it. There are times when their regulations conflict with the owner's regulations and that might fall into a corner, so.
With the owner's regulations?
Now, Canada was a slightly different. No, no, that's why we're putting this here and the town of Canada is about to. Uh, the town of Canada, they must know this yet, but they're about to change their water policies to say that if you're in the town of Farmington. Or excuse me, if you're in the town of. Canada, Farmington. Water District of the Town of Canada, you are subject to the Town of Farmington's rules and regulations. And the only reason I want to put it in, in as a condition. Is so that you're aware of that today when the law is technically not that, but when you're building the water systems, the law will reflect. The only one that comes to mind is the request for extension law. Purpose, which I think that we have resolved, but I. No, you're not subject to the desires of the. Farmington Water District, you're subject to their policies and regulations, the number of valves, the diameters of the pipes. I, and I'm just saying this for the board's edification and yours, part of the discussion that we had yesterday was they were asking for a significant number of additional valves. That are not in their policies or regulations. And they're, but whatever their policies or regulations are, it's what you're gonna be stuck with.
Okay. But you came to an agreement.
We came to an agreement.
Back and forth, okay.
Yes.
All right.
They were asking for more above and beyond your policies and regulations, just to. Put it plain, okay. And we're saying in the condition that we're proposing that. Must comply with policies and regulations, not Farmington's.
Well, well, we're also saying you've got to comply with the conditions in Farmington's. Letter that was just uploaded today or the other day that says, I think this is what you're. Indicator, you're talking about marathon team, team to update plans to include three-way valve clusters at all intersections. Honestly, I have no earthly idea if that's in Farmington's. Uh, regulations.
It's not.
Uh, it's not in the town of Canada was regulation. But. Farmington wants it, we're requiring it as. Part of this condition of needing their letter and you're happy to do it. That's what's been agreed. You're happy to do it. I think that the. We can talk about it for another month. Yeah. I would rather not. I, as long as it's specific to the list that's agreed, which is.
Nope.
Conditions. It's anything in their policies. I'm not going to give on that if we wanted, the option is talking about it for another. The question is if it. I would just want to understand that it's the policies as of the approval now, so we're not changing something as we go with file. Oh, not even a little. You're subject to their policies, just like you'd be subject to ours if we operate.
Okay. We have our, it's above order. Anything come out of last night's amendment to the IZ that we should be concerned about or include in any of our deliberation?
Yes, uh, that's a good question, Chuck, and, and Eric has just added to the whereas clause is a section that. Uh, planning board has determined that. Uh, the dimension shown on the preliminary base plans. Uh, reflect the overall intent of the downboards. Uh, incentives on a.
Okay. We covered everything. Belts and suspenders, we've got it all. Okay, um, I'm going to close the public hearing. And there's no further discussion. The public's had a chance to speak. And we'll move on to consideration. Of the. Premier overall subdivision for a pen landing.
One, one other thing?
Sure.
Um, can I just get? Um, and I don't know which one of you would like to do this job for Matt. Uh, your mutual consent to extend the time period. Contained in New York State Town Law, section two seventy-six related to the final subdivision approval. You consent to extend that, right? Unless you can revoke it at any time and write it. Okay, what are, what are we extending from the date that we submitted for decision making or? Yeah. Okay. And then you can start your sixty-two days whenever you'd like. Okay. I guess I'm not sure what I'm consenting.
Doesn't that usually involve seeker, the sixty-two seeker?
Does, but there's a dozen initiatives because. Already been filed, so. Essentially after the final. Uh, the applicant filed the final site plan, final subdivision application before they were. Technically eligible to file it. And as an accommodation back then, because you wanted it reviewed at the T R C.
Yeah.
And you wanted to get that process moving, we let you keep it instead of just rejecting it and saying there's no application at all. Which means that there's a sixty-two day time limit once they get preliminary approval. I would like that to be extended. So that you can't automatically file your final site plan approval tomorrow morning. I'd recommend that you do. Okay, but don't I have a pending final? You do. Subdivision. As an accommodation by the town. Town staff could have rejected it because. Prior to receiving, but you, you should be. Filing it tomorrow morning. You should be filing your application.
Okay.
But to get you guys moving, we just kept it on the books.
Yeah.
Uh, as, as a courtesy, as an accommodation. And now we're running up against our sixty-two day timeline. Our sixty-two day deadline. Oh, meaning we can't ask for action on it after sixty-two days tomorrow. Yeah, exactly. I don't know when sixty-two days expire, but it's between now and the next planning.
Got it, yes.
So if you would extend that. Uh, for sixty-two days, that would be fun. Not gonna file. Final plan at the county clerk's office. Without signatures on it. Or you can if the sixty-two days expires. Nobody does that. We, we won't be. Okay, so you're mutually consenting to extend that time period.
Yes.
Until otherwise revoked to the writing.
Yes. Good to go then? All right, getting back to the preliminary overall, we looked at and reviewed a draft resolution at the last meeting or two meetings ago. And. Had some additions, corrections. Amendments. And I think we now have a resolution that we can act on. And. We're not gonna certainly read the, is everybody comfortable there, they, they know what the resolution is? Do you want to hear again the additional conditions that were discussed this evening?
Yeah, gotta get other stuff to change this one more time.
If you would, yeah.
And then I guess if I, if I could ask, all the other conditions are the same as the draft that we got last.
No.
We just haven't seen them. I just want to make sure there's. You'll get, you'll get notified.
I'm just comparing the two other and there's a couple of dates.
They're not subject to your opinion tonight, but if there's a problem, we can work through it. How about that? But generally, all the changes were made from the last meeting. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna negotiate the conditions tonight. We can negotiate them. If there's a problem with any, we can discuss it. And work through them after. We're not going through condition by condition.
Okay.
If you have issues with any, we'll be happy, I'm happy to work, work through them. Okay. But would that take another board action to modify? From a timeframe standpoint, that's why I'm asking. It, it would really depend. Um, in some certain senses, maybe. In most certain senses, not. Uh, because most fall under the town engineers comments. Um, and the town engineer can modify them. I mean, subsequently, they're pretty much the same as what you've seen, but.
Yeah.
They're not offering. If there's something in there has a, a gray area and we can clarify now, that's the only reason I. No, I don't think there'll be any.
Okay.
All right, as it relates to changes from the resolution that I sent on Friday last week for the board. Uh, we had an whereas clause, obviously that's finding. Finding that's in performance. So approved by the town board. Uh, condition six was revised, as Chris had earlier, basically that easements be relied over open space. Taken by the owner of lot six hundred. Place and references phases, some reference phases a section eliminating condition eighteen. New conditions to be added, uh, condition twenty-four regarding the distance from clearing limits of property lines being noted on the planet and then. There would not be a portion of twenty feet. On the property line.
On the north side.
On the north side. Oh, so here's my question on that. Um, if we say it's just on the north side, if that's me, Matt, I'm, I'm sure you won't. But the data is on the east side, closer to twenty feet, we just left it at twenty feet, twenty feet along the whole boundary.
Oh, it's not, cause it's like fifty feet on the.
Okay, do we want to. Fifty feet on the east side? Cause if, again, if you just say twenty on the north and you leave the.
I know.
East unstated and then.
That's what we said was fifty, I think you said a lot.
Don't they, don't they have an area of disturb, disturbance limits on somewhere? But I'm asking for the dimension from the disturbance limits to the property number, which is in the condition. Distance from clearing limits to the property lines, but not a specific minimal distance.
Right.
I don't remember that off the top of my head, but I would say that's a very future section that we have to come back for. And we will clearly show the section one clearing limits for your guys' approval. And I know that twenty feet on that north side is good, so. I'd rather leave that the final section, whatever it is, four, three. Discussion if you're able from a numeric standpoint. Uh, you added a condition that mailbox details, which will send the phone be added. Uh, add a mission that clarification be provided by the book was answered, that second drive is named continue to cross uptown Boulevard. This should add the ECB comments, noted on the plans. Uh, we, this is the guy that the applicant shall comply with, the town department of water shows rules, regulations, policies. And one last condition, the. Party signature on final plans that shall pay approval from the town engineer, town attorney. Those deed restrictions, I'll be getting the owner of lots, hundred owned, operate and maintain. All open space areas, trails and stolen ones of the facilities. Here, that's it.
Okay. So those are the conditions. Uh, did you, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to be. Fanical about this. What's the revision plan date in the, where it first where is? Okay. Is that the latest revised preliminary overall?
That's been.
Okay. So when I saw last, I thought there was a subsequent, okay, so, uh, based on those conditions, uh, someone give me a motion.
I will take the motion for the, we live overall. Um, subdivision approval of uptown landing at Hartside Drive with the twenty-nine conditions as discussed.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Two-nine.
I'll second, yes, it's, okay, and a motion in second. For discussion? All in favor? Post. None, motion carries.
Thank you.
Don't work. Okay.
So at your. Tomorrow, you'll submit a formal request for advanced site preparation, I'm assuming. Very near future. Yes, we have some swift, we have a meeting set up on Monday with M I B to discuss final swift comments and letter credit, I think. The Tuesday or Monday afternoon, that package will come to the town requesting the grading permit. Uh, assuming that we're working on final comments of M I B. Is the board comfortable with that request being placed on its next agenda? No matter, you know, if.
Yeah, that was the last thing I wanted to talk about would be section one. Okay, is what the, what the schedule is for review and I think. In a request that I think you had made, uh, so we do a, I guess, initial. Review at our May thirteenth meeting and then. Hopefully, if all things going well, that the subsequent meeting, the second meeting in May. Section one final could possibly be considered.
Yeah, I, I think the, the discussion was if we could potentially. Address any comments that the board might have on what you've taken into consideration for final section one. Now or in advance, so we can come with answers. If, and it sounded like to me, some of the landscaping comments and maybe some of the other ones, uh, mailboxes. Obviously we'll incorporate those, but if there's any newer additional final section one comments that we can be prepared for, we'd be happy to have that discussion.
I think we're just to get down skinny with section one. I mean, that's, these plans will be details, details, details. Cause I think we agreed there are certain items that would be looked at more closely with section one and I think. Now's the time to do that. I think as far as the general layout, what we did this evening, or let's give you the. The, the okay and that, it's just a matter of, are you a reason you want to change things so shy, I hope.
That's not defined at this point.
So.
And however.
And then we'll move on to section one.
Well, so my, my belief is that, and I don't know if this is your plan or not, but the grading that the applicant is going to be looking for. Corresponds just about exactly with. The final phase one plan. But I think they're going to request advanced site preparation separate. From that, to be, to be granted. Prior to final phase.
Yeah, we haven't done one of those in a while.
Fifteen years. But we haven't had. But to be honest, we haven't had a subdivision. Of this magnitude. Um, that, that recently.
For the board to benefit. Tell them what that constitutes in terms of.
Sure.
So with the board approval, then.
Yeah, so in your subdivision regulations, not the zoning group, but your chapter one seventy-four. Uh, one seven four dash seven R is called advanced site preparation. It says, after a planning board vote to approve a subdivision. And before receipt of the planning board chair signature on the approved final plan. The planning board may grant approval for site preparation upon formal request by the applicant. Said application shall describe the site preparation to be completed and be supported by good and sufficient reasons. For starting in advance of final approval. Surety required by the planning board for the performance of the described site preparation. Shall be accepted by the town board and filed with the town before it issues a permit. Now, the reason this section exists is because. There's a usually six months to a year before. Uh, an applicant can really actually get. Uh, all the conditions, we have thirty conditions here, and then the final will have conditions that involve. Coordinating with numerous outside agents, so it takes time. Um, but if they have their SWIP in place, if they have their letters of credit or their bonds, surety bonds in place. Um, and detailed what they're going to do, which you have the details of what they're gonna do, it's. The final phase one grading plan, I'm assuming. Uh, the planning board can say, okay, you're in good enough shape to start digging, to start moving dirt. You can't build. The town staff will review and issue a grading permit or a site development permit, I'm assuming. Um. So there's been a lot of regulation, um, but it's to allow an applicant to move forward with a limited amount. Uh, prior to getting all the signatures on the final plans. Um, it's in, you know, it's in the discretion of the board.
Um it's in, you know, it's in the discretion of the board, it's not something you're obligated to do. Um but the language here says, after a planning board board vote to approve a subdivision, and you just. Conducted a vote to approve a subdivision. Um and it's going to be before the receipt of the planning board chair signature on the approved final plan. Um they can ask and you can grant uh approval for site preparation. Uh and that allows them to start moving dirt, subject to the towns, all the towns other regulation of the states. Stormwater uh regulations. Does that make sense?
And that would be immensely advantageous to us and allow, you know, that. To the end of May, if that's when section one can be accommodated, that allows us to. Get contracts from the board, get that letter of credit approved by the town board at their May. Ninth nineteenth meeting, whichever that is, eighteenth meeting, and get things teed up, ready to go by the end of the month.
Yeah, so they they should make that request for consideration on our May thirteenth meeting.
They should, yeah, they should get that in, and you can submit the request.
It'll be in by May first, I anticipate, I think we probably have a couple highs to dot with M R B on the SWIP, but otherwise we're.
And is the is the planning board comfortable with that? With directing staff to add that under uh other board business on your May thirteenth agenda?
So the request comes in, yeah.
Preston, you got that, so that.
Okay.
They're not under time crunch, but obviously it needs to be in.
So we're both, uh we'll get into section one, uh there are. Uh full scale drawings, I think, of section one available in the development office. If you uh.
Yeah, and I think.
Look at them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you just had, it's a four fifteen upload on the final section one is the latest.
Yes.
And that's the hard copies that you guys have are the same. As what's on uh permit on the final section one.
Yeah, for.
For fourteen. Alright, very good, anything else regarding uptown? Thanks, fellas, thanks, you're appreciate uh your patience.
Thank you.
Working. Back and forth on this, I think it'll all be a good project for the town and. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Uh alrighty. Next, we're going to move on to C P N twenty twenty five oh sixteen, a public hearing. Uh for an application from Sharon Low and Mr. Hanson. Uh plans prepared by Jared Ranson. For a subdivision of a twenty three point four two five acre parcel, creating two lots, a lot one being. Over four acres, lot two being a little over nineteen acres. So Shannon. Thanks for, I hope you found it interesting.
I, I guess, it's a lot.
Okay, tell us what you wanna do out there. On twenty one. Important as uptown land.
Oh, thank you, um so we're just, we bought that um twenty three point whatever eight bridge. Um in December of twenty twenty three, I believe. And we are just trying to subdivide that um bottom parcel there um. Kind of the reasoning for how we were laying it out was because of the. Pond and the blue line stream, we wanted to keep building away from that um. And preserve, you know, water and stuff and. I mean, it's on the other side of a tree line, so it's a private for another residence. Um and that's basically where we came to that with, and then the two hundred feet roadside. Was trying to stay within that, um then it's kind of just an odd shaped parcel, cause it goes back so far. And I think that's where we were needing approval. Somebody liked it, cause they already bought it, if you say yes, so there's that.
Okay, yeah, there's a, there was a sales side, sales side.
Yeah.
On lot one, okay, do you own the out parcel, it shows as Sharon Low?
Yes, we, yeah, except for that corner in the um up top, we own the rest of it, yeah, we live over there.
So you had that property, you bought.
Yes, the farmer was selling it and didn't want a parcel off himself, so we bought the whole thing to keep it from being too many homes behind us.
Okay. Well, one of the topics of discussion in both the E C B, I hope you read their minutes, and the ag committee. Was uh the question as to if and how it was, the property was formed.
Sure.
Um do you have any history on the uh property, I don't know how long you live, you've been living.
Um we've been there about eleven years.
Okay.
Uh it used to be farmed by um uh oh gosh, Leger Acres. And they were conventional corn, soy, that kind of rotation, and then when.
And is it primarily north of the stream?
Uh they did both sides, yeah, um, cause there's an agricultural easement on. So south side of the stream.
Okay.
Um so they they farmed all both sides, and then they sold it to us when he was getting out of farming. And then we uh last year rented it out to Stan Sutton on Knott Road. Um and under the um, like he was gonna grow grasses for his cows, I didn't want conventional farming there anymore, sorry, but. One, and um he never actually did anything with that. Uh last year, I think it was because of planting that kind of seed and so much rain in June, there was a lot of washout. So there's nothing actually growing there currently.
See that.
And then on that side, there was just a giant fire, so there's really nothing on the other side. Yeah.
Okay. And.
And he's aware of all this, by the way. And then the loop on everything.
Cause it it is in our ag preservation district, certainly I, the concern of the ag committee and. And the E C B is uh that this isn't gonna turn into a development. Uh. What's your intent with lot two, to keep it?
Oh, okay, so that's a great question that actually I kinda um may have changed this morning, potentially, can I just go there?
Sure, yeah.
So, um so there is like here, and there's another like area right in here. That these people, if allowed to sell it to them, would like to buy, just to have this be a single area, right? And then we would keep the rest and continue to be fine. That was an idea, it just presented itself this morning, actually. Uh uh other than that, we were just going to, if you didn't, you don't do that. Then we were, we figured we'd have to add in some kind of. Add um entrance for Stan, so that he could continue to work this and then work the rest of it. That was, I don't know. I know, learning as we go here.
I talked to the farmer, he said he signed a five year lease with him.
Yeah, mm-hmm, but I think in there it does say that that is subject to if we were to sell part of it, that that is outside of that.
Oh. Did you get an ag exemption also?
Uh he has one.
He has one?
Yeah.
And he was putting a plant in hay.
Yeah, like Timothy Grass or something like that. I believe is what he said.
Yeah. Uh. I read some of the other notes. I believe it was from E C B, I think actually mentioned that. Right now, did you ask for a. A waiver from code one seventy four nineteen, which gives you, you you have that waiver?
Uh it's, it was submitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, on forty two. Got you, thank you, my old question, there is currently an ag exemption on the property. Yeah, that's what I thought. Speaking of waivers, before you, she also requested a. A waiver from the perk test requirements and the location of the septic system.
Which they actually did that this morning.
For lot one or lot two?
For the lot we're trying to sell, yeah, that was with um, oh gosh, um. Bill Grove.
Grove.
Yeah, he did that this morning and it worked right in the middle at one point five, I believe.
Good. I'm sorry.
No, no, you were on the waiver.
No, I mean, that was one of my big questions is that. Um. I wonder how that's gonna go, if you sell the rest of that to. That would be. Just a weird lot. It is a weird lot, and that's why the other, the waiver you referred to initially was brought up. Um. I didn't get a real good answer, but uh whenever we take away ag land, we try to save as much as we can. Always wanna know the impact on a farmer, what happens to him, them, uh I didn't really get a good answer on that, but um. It just pushes them to another location that we did, we're we're diminishing our like ag land, so if you plan. To maintain lot two, it'd be ag, would be really good, um.
Yeah, we don't wanna change anything on the the big portion.
Yeah, on your north north side.
Yeah, yeah, behind your house, yeah.
Bob, are you suggesting your request is not a de restriction?
Well, that'd be awesome, but um I think the fear. Is more houses to go up.
Well, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Okay.
I just, that's why we we tried to do it as a smaller portion, so that it would be like outside of people being able to like. Parcel it out further, which is why when it went up for sale, we just bought the whole thing out, like, okay, we'll figure it out later, cause we did not want it to. Wanted to keep it country out there was the main goal, essentially.
I I remember your house, now you farm a lot on this, you personally.
I, yeah, I did have a bunch of stuff growing there, yeah. And we we like it if it is.
Yeah, that's the only thing I would say, is make sure that we can still farm, but it's prime land, it's very, very, uh like we say, prime, prime part of land.
Sure, yeah.
Which is this, I'm sorry, this is the lot two area?
Lot two.
Yeah, and that's twenty three acres. Okay, oh, yeah. Um I mean, would you be interested in putting it in a bag easement, a conservation easement?
What does that mean?
It means file a a D, well, like a deed restriction, but. Don't think a deed restriction would be effective here, and I think you'd be prohibited, so it would be a permanent. Easement, a restriction on the property, it can only be farmed or left for its open space, can't be.
On the northern side of the stream, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I, I mean, I have no.
Yeah, cause really, you couldn't do anything around the pond and the stream because of.
Yeah.
The buffer setback, though.
I think that, is there such a thing as like, um, there's like wild flower eat, like things that you can get so that they can be. Grown for like um pollinators and stuff, do you know anything about that?
There are so things.
There aren't such things, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we we're just talking about.
Sure, 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 like we're saying, keeping it that.
Or like really assuring that it's.
Yeah. I don't want it to be anything else but that, for sure.
That would help that farmer out, I know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Protect the uh prime.
Right.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, uh how would that happen? Be.
Applicant will submit any of the proposed easement, we can, the town staff can work doing that, and then it'll be filed with the subdivision plan.
Uh yeah, and again, you're saying that's like the northern side of the stream?
Yes.
Well, let's just be careful, what, is that what we're saying?
Why don't you just say lot two?
Lot two, you okay with the whole lot two, or just?
Well.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, which is like another four, I think, ish acres.
North of.
North of the stream, huh, yeah, for sure.
Like that little sliver would be included in the lot, and it wouldn't be separate.
Might.
Might be.
Oh.
Is is that the intent that where where the pond is and where the stream is to potentially? Or merge, yeah, that's where, thank you, merge.
So you're asking me if like this bottom parcel and that other little park below to merge them, if that's what the thought was?
It's.
Yes, yes, yeah, and then have the larger above the stream stay as ag land, yeah.
So instead of lot one being about four acres, it would be. Six, seven, eight ish.
Yeah, I think it's like. Right.
No, we wouldn't change the lot dimensions, the agriculture easement would just go over. Same area from north.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what's happening is that, change it.
Oh, if you could, if you wanted to, yeah.
Right.
Oh, cool, yeah. For sure.
If. It's extended all the way back. And lot one would become all this?
Ten acres.
Is that more or less what?
Yeah, this and then this part here.
See, this makes it.
Yeah, we did that because of the way the stream and pond comes through here, plus our um. That's a spring right there, so we were trying to keep building and and any potential like um. Anything that could affect that in this wildlife area, kind of further away. Was the thought.
I I like that idea of increasing lot one, because then it doesn't have that little. Like, what do we call it, the little flag pole there on the max twenty one, yeah. Do you need access to the smart field, or is that little?
Yeah, um if if this has. So then we would need to put in some kind of ag access here, because the current ag access is right here. So I think like, um depending if we obviously goes through, they had made it so that they're closing. The end of June, so they can get out here and play on this terrain, or if, you know, it would be whatever, but.
Not subdivision, uh the.
Um so, yeah, um but, yeah, I mean, if if we need to move stuff around to maintain the agriculture.
Well, we're trying to do it once, instead of you're having to go back and. You know, do get it, get one application approved, and then, oh, well, maybe I'll move that lot line. Uh and we have, you know, we love seeing you, but it's, you have to come back again.
My my question is, if she's already gotten sold at that level. Yes, if she's got it sold at that level already, and then we we change it to ten acres versus five, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't mess with her lot lines.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it now, I'd do it after.
Yeah, the Realtor called, and she was like, they would love to buy that last section, I was like.
Oh. Yeah, I would, I would let the new owner come in and do that with us, or with the town. Yeah, 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 definitely.
Whoa, oh.
Yeah, it'd be much easier that way.
And then we would just move our, like, our lines this way and make this a bigger lot. A line adjustment from like our double here. And just like go that way.
I would almost spread it, split it right on the stream, that would be what I would do.
Would have to, you know.
Well, take out that back lot in there, slot line of their existing lot. And just merge it with the uh lot two. Anyway, I I I think the concern about the farming remaining. The farming, the operations remaining and the way to protect that, I think we talked about it. You know, the easement, not the easement, but the uh.
Conservate.
Conservations. Uh that's the way to go, and I think if the board is so inclined, we. Make that a condition of the, and the approval we would give. Okay.
Well, and if. Tomorrow morning, your Realtor has more definition.
Okay.
Then you can come back for the limited site plan approval between now and June. Or, well, for, you have to, some of your engineers redraw the plan. But if the lot line meets anything else.
So, um just so for clarity, so you are saying that I could talk to the engineer and maybe do it all that adjustment in one fell swoop? Like before the. Or is that what you? Like before the, or is that what you're saying?
I don't wanna promise you that, but if if you'd like the board to approve it as is tonight.
Okay.
Is that what you want, or do you want something different?
I mean, whatever works for the town, I mean, I'm, you know. Okay.
You could come back with a redrawn plan next. Sort of by next month.
Yeah, well, I don't, they always have to have a plan in by next week. Um, yeah, I would see the, uh, second, second meeting day.
Just do a lot, let me just merge this. Hey, this is the second lot, not creating any lots. We're not gonna read lot, we're not gonna design it for. But it's.
I personally would bend it, just leave it to wait.
Well, now you have two lots.
Right now. Yeah, move on it like it is.
Well, then if she won the change, she'd have to triangulate and make it amended after.
Standing off the menu, yeah. Uh, yes, yeah.
Uh, do you know who your lawyer is?
Uh, Phil Cleary, focus.
Why don't, if you wanted to request, do you want? And they wanna buy something different, is that correct?
Oh, no, 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 they they wanna buy this.
But they wanna.
But they would love to, they basically called Lisa and they were like, hey, if they would like to sell any more of that land, we'd love to buy it, and I was like, oh, okay. Because I was like, you know, you know, it's just less for us to maintain down there and whatever, so.
They do that. Add, look, add land by lot line and just move it between now and.
Yeah. With, with the new owner, with the new owner doing all that work.
And.
The new owner would do all that work.
Or you could do it between now and the closing because if you buy lot line, not planning board meeting.
And we we try to create lots, lines are parallel, property line, I mean, lot one works for the most part, it leaves sort of an odd-looking lot two, but lot one now to take it and start. That's a consideration you gotta think about with the future buyers that you're now sticking other angles into the lot and it makes lot one start to look kind of awkward, so that's just something to think about.
Oh, I, so it's the angles that are the weird.
Well, yeah, I mean, you you look at lot two, now what you're left with is lot two, which is a somewhat non-conforming lot in terms of the uh, width versus the depth, and that's something you're asking a waiver from.
Yeah.
And that's something we have to, you know, consider as part of our deliberations now. Uh, but you just don't wanna create more more awkwardness or more non-conformity in terms of the the lots. So the way lot one is shaped right now, I think we're all in agreement, it's a rectangular lot for the most part. It's a quadrile. Quadrilateral, like, but going back to my old geometry days. And works for the most part.
Okay.
That's something I think this board would buy indoors, but, uh, start putting kinks and angles of lot lines, then you create.
So, but if I, if we adjust the property lines, then that would help? I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're looking at a plan, we're gonna consider this plan tonight, okay? And we have two. The consideration of the waiver request regarding the width versus the depth, is that something that is of concern to the board?
None of this area, okay.
And I think with the perk test, uh, Eric has in the conditions, the requirement that we're not approving a building lot, it still requires to go through uh, the review of, uh, the uh, the. Well, it would be in the site plan eventually when they build the house. How far away from they, are they from maybe a house, building a house there? If Bill's doing a perk test, they're probably gearing up, right?
Uh, oh, from building there?
Yeah, lot one.
I don't know anything about that, to be honest with you.
ECB, we talked about the the drive. That's the current farm lane, drive up on lot one that you were pointing to when you said.
Yeah, it's it's on like the most southern point of the our property on Route twenty-one.
And you're showing that on the plan to be representative where access to lot one would be. You're showing site distances from it, uh, it was brought up by the, uh, egg, excuse me, the ECB and this consideration, this board is very close to the property line, we're neighbors to the south. And we have a requirement that the driveway can be no closer than ten feet to the property line, so that would be a consideration if and when lot one's ever developed.
For the people building.
People build, right.
Okay.
If that's where they intend to put the driveway. That's something we're forewarning you on, um. If and when they build, they'll have to get a permit from, uh, NIDOT. Uh, have we discussed the NRI features? There's the pond, there's the stream. Uh, there's some deeper slopes of property. Anything that the board feels would be considered a restriction? If lot two remains undeveloped and forever wild, then I guess, you know, the NRI feature would be preserved.
Yeah.
So if we get that, uh, conservation easement. Uh, you do show the stream and pond, pond buffers of a hundred feet, ECB would have requested a hundred and fifty feet.
And that all, I understand what that means.
Not really.
If anybody ever wants to build on that in the range of the stream, ECB is requesting that they not be able to do that within a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, right, that's, yeah.
But again, if it's forever wild, it's never gonna be built on. I think it would have sort of, you know, the buffers would be in that area. It might spill on the lot one a little bit, but it would be probably just into the setback lane. Yeah, the northern side, so that would, that's right.
Yeah.
That, that'll be lot one's.
Lot one's.
Challenge, so the same, same thing will apply to lot one, so within a hundred and fifty feet of that water feature. They, they can't build within, within the range.
Okay.
It's just it's fair to let them know that.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah. Well, and that's, I mean, without knowing that was a thing, that was what I was trying to do by keeping, you know, away from the stream to protect it, so.
And I imagine once they come in with a site plan, it'll be, oh, yeah, the house will be closer to the road.
Are we asking then if the plans we modified to show a hundred and fifty feet? It's just any use of these talents, or?
Code's a hundred feet, right?
Sorry if I'm misinterpreting this discussion.
I think at some point, some, there's gotta be some deliberations and regarding changing the code to a hundred and fifty. But if the code's one hundred.
Thank you, one hundred percent, absolutely. That's, I think that's what the code says.
And I think in this case, then like, at fifty feet doesn't make much of a difference, so.
Yeah. You're on NRI, Chuck.
NRI's?
Uh, you just, I was just trying to help you get your thing.
Oh, no, no, I just, uh, you know, NIDOT. Stream buffers. Oh, I wanna go out, see if anybody, Mr. Stryker.
Yes, sir. Well, I can just reiterate.
Do you, uh, what was discussed this evening that that seemed to, uh?
Well, at the last ag committee meeting, the one thing that I wanted to know was the future plans with this property. Because, of course, it came across our board as a subdivision request, but of course, wasn't sure what you know, why is it being subdivided, so I have a little bit better idea now, uh, listening to you, sounds like you're still trying to make a, you know, make a, just part of decision about exactly what you wanna do, it's what it sounded like. But basically, my, my concern is to reiterate what you said is this area is in farmland protection zone and our fear is that if you build one house there, that the rest of the property could fall into houses. And if that happens, it could be a domino effect to the rest of the entire area. And in that regard, if that were to happen, that means the farm protection area is no more.
Right.
Farmland will be.
It's been breached, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, part of me feels like I I can praise the idea of protecting the large parcel and building on smaller one. In my mind, that is in a way a compromise, right, because I know that more houses are going to be built, but I still I'm always gonna stand up and preach that we do need to protect some, so in a way, that's a compromise. But at the same time, if I could wave a magic wand, I would say no more houses can be built anywhere in the town, but I suppose sometimes a compromise does need to happen, by well, like, other concern though is if we are, if we allow a house to be built here, how many other areas in the farm protection area will we bend to that same compromise? So, okay, if you protect this parcel, but, okay, we'll let you build on this parcel, if every single piece of farmland in the farm protection area, if everybody builds a house on part of it, that'll add up to a lot of farmland lost. Guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm a little perplexed because I wanna compromise, because I want to show that I want both some future development, but also a hard line drawn in the sand that we're going to protect this area and we're not going to allow anybody to build here.
Okay, well, and I think what we discussed this evening is a compromise, I think. I think, uh, allowing a house or a potential house to be built on lot one and have the rest of the property protected under some sort of conservation easement, or with nothing would be built perpetually on that, I think that's very fair compromise, I, I, you know, I thank Shannon for offering to do that and, uh, in return, uh, she has the ability to sell lot one and potentially have a house built there.
And just for clar- clarity, um, we are talking the, um, agricultural, um, whatever you just said about keeping it frontline, that's above the stream, right?
Above the stream, yeah.
Okay, yes, then a hundred percent.
Above, you know, the the property line of lot one, lot two, so the conservation easement would, no, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, above the street, that's.
Okay, okay.
We changed, yeah.
Yeah, then a hundred percent, I will.
And in your defense, I mean, not, I might, I gotta say, and what you're saying is, we always try to save ag land, but unfortunately, it's, pleasure acres sold it to a non-farmer. So, sold it to a civilian person that they can do anything with their land, she's been very nice there and given it to uh, back to an ag also, so that's the unfortunate that I've seen with farming in this area is that pleasure acres sell a lot of lace on twenty-one and across twenty-one this side. Uh, the unfortunate of that. Uh, they wanna build. And we try to control that. And do it as much as we can.
Out of just curiosity, what would have happened if we hadn't re-rented it out to Stan Sutton? Would that have been considered still ag land or would it have changed?
It would have been your, it's still ag, it's zoned ag right now, prime line has been identified by the town.
Okay.
And the ag committee, but still, you're in the ag two district.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and the ag, and that land is identified as private.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, it's difficult to find. But it's also zone AR two, which gives you certain rights.
Right.
It's forced development, so it's, it's a give and take, and again, I think we've it's, uh, we've given it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if, between this and the other applications, I just maybe think of a larger question that the town has to grapple with and has grappled with in the past, but continue in the future, that use only rules allow by right, you know, development that does threaten agriculture, and this is to explore with the ordinance, maybe your other talent policies, you know, how you can lessen the impact of that, uh, new development, certainly where it does occur. By, we've talked about developing the areas where you want to be developed, make it easier to develop there to lessen development pressure elsewhere. And when development is proposed within agriculture areas, reducing the impact by potentially minimizing or reducing lot sizes so they're not taking two acres out of farmland as opposed to potentially even twenty thousand square feet, which would be a little less of an effect. Other things like that, uh, strategies to minimize the impact of the development, but you know, as, when it gets to you guys, it's maybe a little too late, but a question more for the ordinance maybe, you know.
Right. For sure, I mean, going back to the time you were sitting in this chair, that, uh, it's always been an issue, okay. All righty, let's, uh, move on, anybody in the audience wanna address the board regarding this application? Hearing none? Let's proceed, uh, it is a subdivision. And I will. It's a subdivision. She never listens. I'll close the public hearing. We have no further, uh, comments or concerns from the public and, uh, we want to unlisted action and seeker. And we'll have to take the seeker separate from the site plan or subdivision if you don't mind. So someone wanna give me a motion regarding the seeker from this?
So, no.
Second.
Okay, let me motion for a unlisted action under seeker. Uh, we have a part one submitted by the applicant. And there was no issues as far as architectural. So architectural, archaeological. Nothing's for his wildlife, okay, so, and it's type part two and part three were filled out by MRV. We have those in our package. So I think we're ready to move, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Host, okay. Uh, do you have that, um, subdivision in front of you?
No, I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, someone wanna give me a motion on the subdivision?
I'll make the motion for the single-stage subdivision, that provision, TTM twenty-five zero one six, no address statement, twenty-one, with the six conditions. Six, that's great, the sixth condition we added is an agricultural conservation agent. Replace out the lot two, north into stream. The easement should be reviewed and improved by the town engineer, town attorney, fire side, applied to plans being signed by the future.
So six conditions.
I'll second it.
Can it motion the second? Further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Host. Shannon, thanks for sticking around.
And make sure your willingness to keep those.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Phrase that to the town, actually, I didn't know that.
As far as the language on that conservation easement, is it's something you prepare?
Uh, no, it would usually be the applicant, but
Okay.
Once we get a legal description to the staff, maybe we can work together on it.
Okay.
Okay. So just, Kristen, can I just? Thank you, everyone. You too.
Okay. Uh, we have two, uh, second, ninety-day extension requests. Uh, first one being from Mark's Engineering for the Turk property at fifty fifty-one County Route sixteen. Uh, their request came in on the three twenty, expiration was three twenty-three, so they got it in before the expiration. So, uh, Logan, tell us what's happening out there.
Um, so we're we're real close to getting every, all the conditions met and it's been taking a while, because as you know, this is a very dynamic development and there are still finalizing contractors for this project, and that's kind of what's holding us back, we need to get insurance from the contractors implemented in the cloud permit for the site development applications, which I believe is the last.
in the cloud permit for the site development applications, which I believe is the last condition that needs to be met to obtain signatures. So I I just talked with the Turks this morning and they're finalizing that, and that should be happening in the next couple of weeks. But as you know, we've kind of went past the previous extension, so we need go for our last of the two.
Glad you sent the last.
That's a good one, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is the last of the.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so your reasons being, you wait for D O H approval as well as getting a full set of architectural, right? You mentioned hiring contractors also, that's.
Well, uh, with the site development application, it doesn't um, require architectures, but the architectural plans have to be to a certain.
It's tight out there, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I have to, they have to be somewhat complete in order for the contractors to bid on them, and that has been completed. So for the site development plan, if one of the criteria is to have insurance from the contractors.
Okay, so this second and final extension would be to July twenty-first. Uh, please, please pass that on to your client. And does the board have any concerns about bringing this final extension?
Yeah.
If not, I'll make a motion that we grant a second ninety extension to C P N twenty-three one oh nine for the Turk property of fifty fifty-one, County Route sixteen. The R L B District to July twenty-first of this year, second. Motion second, discussion, if not all in favor?
Aye.
Host, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging around.
Yeah. Guys, have a nice night.
Okay, you too.
Talking about the shirt.
All right, the last extension, second extension is from Doug Sherratt, out on County Route twenty-eight, and he's requesting also a second day extension. Uh, his first ninety day extension expired back in January, but I guess he lost track of time and oh, it expired February twenty-second. So he is back with a request on April ninth. Uh, is that you, Doug? One line?
Yes, I did. Yes, sir.
All right, how you making it out there?
Well, right now, we're working with the architect, Mark Mueller, Muller, and little little snag with him, because he had surgery on his hip and he's trying to recover. But we did get a sketch and it looks like we'll be, he'll be done with the drawings probably by mid-May.
Okay. Uh. So I I don't know what the conditions of your approval were offhand. That that happened a while ago. Uh, so you feel that there's no reason why you couldn't meet the the conditions, at least get the plan signed, site plan signed by the next ninety days?
Yes.
Okay. Well, specifically with the extension, and you heard us say, we usually grant two extensions and beyond that, we think it's time to come back possibly and talk to the board again. Uh, so this would be to July twenty-first. Uh, this year would be your second extension, so hopefully we get everything done by then.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Uh, so hearing that, someone want to give me a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to grant a second ninety day extension to Doug for his property at, on County Route twenty-eight to July twenty-first of this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Host? I just have it. Okay, Doug, thanks for hanging around.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Bye.
All right, that takes us to the many minutes from the meeting of, that would have been April eighth.
Yes.
Anybody have any additions or corrections beyond what the Caribbean circulated?
I didn't read it.
See, we're here.
Oh, you know what? I did read it, talked to Chris.
So there's three of us that may vote on.
Make so moved to approve that.
Okay. And I'll go, yeah. At the record show, three zero.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, no jury releases. No other business tonight, the town board referrals. Uh, training. There's some good opportunities coming up. Uh, Federation has a couple, MRB has their boot camp. Uh. Finger Lakes Planning Council workshops in May. That's the one over at Genesee County College.
Sam, I'm going.
There's. Tavia, that's it, yep.
Yeah.
And I see the NF, the Planet Federation is gonna have a session.
Yeah.
In Canada, day, all day.
You know, is that June or July?
It's later.
It's like a Friday.
Okay, um. Anybody want to talk about projects?
Mark and I are gonna connect.
Yeah, Chuck, what I have, now that I better understand.
You're always.
I have been engaged.
Been anointed.
I've engaged with everybody to continue moving the existing projects a little harder as well as hopefully assign a couple of units. So we should, I would expect in the next month or so, have a little bit more detail as to what the upcoming actions on those projects.
Okay. And I'll probably be looking for a new project and Dan's probably looking.
I wasn't gonna task you with a new project, because I know you're a busy man and you're doing a lot of things, but I'm happy to have you volunteer.
Well. I I could sort of.
What are the open, are there open categories to be now?
Well. Maybe you have category, I just, these are a couple I wrote down, climate smart communities.
Yep.
The tree and plenty list, it'd be nice if we could wrap that up and have our.
Yeah, that's.
Our list.
I can tell you what I've got on a list.
And real quick, solar. Solar is solar, and I don't know, we gotta visit batteries.
I'm gonna, we're not gonna visit, well, we might be able to visit batteries, because that one person not hearing it. That didn't want it. And the the residential portion that I wrote for the co-last division, I just realized.
Oh.
That change has never happened.
Never got that, well, I'm gonna go refer that up.
Yeah.
Uh, green initiatives and agriculture. Uh, some of the stuff we're talking about tonight as far as, you know, how to preserve our.
I think, I think Mark had a good idea.
So what's your list?
On the on the con plan, because that will go right into our report.
Yeah, so.
Things that we're working on. Super similar, Chuck. I mean, there's the, some of it ECB actually pushed to drive half an area, so it made large partial changes related to the R L D activity. Meaning zoning on the lakeside as it would be for the entire part, so don't don't allow somebody by twenty acres to cross the stream to. Anyways, that's already done.
Yeah, somewhat under consideration.
So with some of the things related to what the ECB really looking to automate standard comments from the ECB. And that for me is the native species pieces, the tree aspect, the trees travel, street that you mentioned today. And then some other things that we could get into discussion on, whether it's how we treat permeas, the papers, and things like that. Standard comments on the rain, rain gardens and things along those lines for maintenance. So it's really just automated many of those topics. The decision is whether or not we want to institute a bargaining opportunity on things like geothermal trade offs, green space, open space, LEDs, lighting and different things along those lines for trade up. Uh, if there's a taste for that, getting into, uh. I'm still expecting most of the E V changes to build the general code. Uh, haven't seen it all happen yet, but it's still expected to happen.
Uh-huh.
Um, stormwater reduction, uh, conversations, and then for really pushing more towards the top planner, things like Tree City USA, climate smart communities, and then community education funding related to that. There's different things that we can do there. It would have been nice, or a little, I was a little further on that because it's been worth the week and all.
The city actually just had the, um, the local rep for the climate smart community and talking. So I know Sarah's got a lot of.
Yeah, I started that conversation.
Yeah. So the East Beach is interested in pushing that more, so.
Great. I I really do see a need to start looking at things like water quality. I think that's, uh, talking with Lake Tahoe and how they mitigated many of the issues that they're having, it really came down to coming up with a way to track and measure water quality. Uh, and I think that becomes something that's important with how we handle things like stormwater runoff and.
So that's, that's, that's already been done. I know a guy that actually does that in the lakes here. And that actually brings me to a, to a point that I wanted to to discuss, but didn't know if it was the right time, but I guess it's a perfect time. I, in regards to water quality, that is a topic I'm extremely passionate about on farm. I pride myself with my farm's environmental stewardship, and we're always looking to become better. Ideally, I want to see zero runoff from my farm, because not only is runoff a detriment to the environment, it's a detriment to me. I, my fertilizer does me no good, it's in the building.
It's in the creek.
It just leaves my fields to grow my crop. But anyways, back to my main point. With new subdivisions, one frustration I've always wanted to voice is oftentimes when new subdivisions are destructive or any new industrial building for that manner, or for that matter, the construction workers go in site with their heavy equipment, move soil around. And oftentimes, in the areas where they seed down the lawn or they plant trees, the soil has been compacted during the construction process, and nobody goes back through and remediates the compaction with a tillage to plow. I I've lost track of how many construction sites I've driven past where I know a construction person mined the area down to subsoil, sold the topsoil, and then they then they plant a tree into the hard compacted subsoil, and they call it good. The the average, the average homeowner might not understand the new environment of their new home. They might not understand their lawn just got compacted during the construction site. Then they go purchase a bag of fertilizer, because they want nice green grass, but they don't understand their soil health is poor and their water infiltration in their soil is poor because the area was compacted. So they go out there and spread fertilizer on their lawn, thinking, oh, this is gonna be great. Since their soil has been compacted, a lot of that fertilizer washes off into the storm drain it goes. So I could, to be direct, but well, my, what I'd love to see in the future is after a construction project is all complete, like to see somebody with a tractor of like a landscape tractor go through and actually plow up. They got all the areas that were disturbed, just to make sure that soil is gonna have good water infiltration in the future. Because soil compaction can't fix itself. It's majorly compacted. You gotta stick steel in the ground and remediate that compaction. I don't mean, uh, some some members here might already know exactly what I'm talking about. I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence, but it's, uh, I work around soil every day, so it's something that's second nature to me, somebody who isn't from that background, just simply might not know.
True.
It's just, just a kind of a point of.
We're gonna proceed or put some sound on top of it. It should be considered for the provisions to the site development and design criteria, I think. Let's just all keep that in mind when they come, so they'll be presented to you at some point for any comments and.
I don't realize.
I think it's the same thing for solar.
Yeah.
Restoring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The funny thing about soil health, on my particular farm, we're getting much more invested in no-till farming. So we leave the soil intact, and we're building soil health, building organic matter, I'm getting much much better using cover crops. Soil is a very interesting thing to understand, because if you do tillage all the time, when it's not necessary, you'll actually hurt your soil health. But if you ever compact the soil, you have to plow it up to kind of fix the found base. It's a very interesting thing to understand. I mean, it's kind of.
I was here at the town, did, uh, there was a training for silver. The town hopeful, I think, I can't remember where, like King's Catering. Main presenter was talking about cover crops. Your micro herd with all the bugs and all this.
Yes, indeed. I could talk about that for hours. Well, we're worn out, so we're not. Thanks, thank you for airing me out. Thanks for coming in tonight, and we appreciate your comments. Uh, anything else? Anything else for it? Okay. It's a special.
Motion to adjourn at eight of six.
I hear a motion. I hear a second. So we hear it, yay.
Yeah.
Well done on the Uptown Landing, that was a tough project and, you know, we got through it.
Thanks for your support.
Well done on the, on the findings and the revolution.